To begin the introductory video. I'd like to call the August 15th, 2023 meeting of the County Commission to order? A little bit of an echo? Thank you all for being with us. I would like to read the ethics reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the Governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Commissioners at our meeting this evening. All right. Also wanted to announce that any Members of the public who are attending the meeting, who parked in the county's parking deck or use public transportation to attend the meeting can get validation for your parking or transit passes from one of the security officers on your way out of the meeting. Okay, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any Members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We now come to public comment. The time limit for a comment to the Board is three Members. When your time expires, when there's about 20 or 30 seconds left, you'll get an orange light, and then when your time's up, there'll be a red light and a sound. And we do ask that people discontinue their public comments once your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. We had a few folks sign up for public comment, so I'm going to go through the list. And I apologize for mispronouncing anyone's name. And once we get through the list, if there's anyone else who wants to participate in public comment, there'll be an opportunity to do that. All right. The first person that signed up is Andrew Clark. Thanks for being here, Andrew.
Part three. Hello, I'm Andrew Clark, Legislative Director for Beddingfield Schidle, Chapter 14, Disabled American Veterans, DAV. Chapter 14 is dedicated to a single purpose, empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respect and dignity. Celebrating in the historical legislation passed last year, because the PACT Act has provided VA benefits for many veterans who earned entitlements through honorable military service, suffering day after day for nearly 50 years from illnesses and injuries resulting from hazardous environment exposures during their military service. As DAV Chapter 14 Legislative Director, I'm using this communication platform today to praise those for passing the PACT Act and the efforts of this community, based on research that suggests that effective effort praising improves performance. The PACT Act is important because it recognizes the service of those with presumptive illnesses and provides access to possible monthly compensation and access to VA healthcare. It's important because of the efforts of all community partners, including but not limited to VA staff, state and county staff, veteran service organizations, all working together provide the best quality service for a challenging process. Buncombe County is important because of the following: The Commissioners this year made tough decisions on budget-related matters such as McCormick Field, a place after renovations will give disabled veterans the opportunity to enjoy the American way of life in a facility with respect and dignity. Due to Sheriff Miller for his service in the United States Army and also implementing this year an employment opportunity partnership with the Army and the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office. Buncombe County is important because of the rated number one in the nation, the Charles George VA Medical Center, who also recently announced expanding facilities to better accommodate the needs of veterans. This county is amazing because of Pratt &amp; Whitney for producing engines powering all F-35s, employing veterans and their dependents. This is an important county because of the Veterans Treatment Court as well. We thank you for this year, and we encourage you to continue to invest in veterans, emergency services, education, and essential workers that make, defend, and protect the American way of life. We also ask for your support in a resolution supporting House Bill 427. I thank you for the time. DAV can be reached at dav14.org or by calling 828-367-0037. And as a reminder, the American Legion World Series Final Game is tonight at 7:00 PM on ESPNU. Thank you for the time. Cheers.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. All right. We are also going to have a public hearing for the Long Shoals Road zoning issue later, and there'll be separate public comment for that. So I'm not going to call on the folks who want to speak to the Long Shoals issue now because we'll do a separate public comment period for that hearing. The next up is Jen Hampton.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name's Jen Hampton. I'm the Chair of Asheville Food and Beverage United, and I just wanted to stop by tonight to express the gratitude of the service workers in Asheville for your continued support. The Reduced Parking for Downtown Workers Program was a game changer for a lot of people. And the possible expansion to the College Street Deck and making the program permanent, that would really have a positive impact on a lot more people. I thought about going into all of the reasons why we need this help with parking, but y'all know about the safety and the cost and all that stuff. I know you're all very aware because that's why you approved the program in the first place. So I also want to say that I know that there wasn't a lot of buy-in when it was launched this time, and not as much as we expected, but it was winter and, you know, there weren't a lot of people working downtown. So if you guys approve it now, there's plenty of time during the height of tourist season for me to get out and canvass and let everybody know about it and get them to sign up, and it'll be pretty popular. You guys will be pretty popular, so, you know, it's a win-win for everybody. So again, I just really want to reiterate that we appreciate your support, and not just in parking, in housing as well, which I'm going to come back next month and talk more about that. Right now, it's just about parking, and it fills me with a lot of optimism to know that people with the power to make positive impacts on our lives have our interests at top of mind. That's really evident in your words and your actions. So with that, I just want to say thanks, and we've got your backs in solidarity, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right. Next is Anthony Pinay. All right, thanks, Anthony.
Appreciate it. I'm the Executive Director for the American Foundation for Informed Consent. On August 9th, I sent an email to each of you, as well as the Director, Head Nurse, and Head Physician of the Department of Health. In that email was linked a copy of the Public Health Notice that was provided to you all on May 19th, as well as a link to a conversation with the department's vaccine coordinator. Since then, a study titled "Evidence for Aerosol Transfer of SARS-CoV-2-Specific Humoral Immunity" was released outlining how antibodies produced in the vaccinated may be transmitted via the air. This would be scientific, peer-reviewed evidence of the phenomenon called shedding. This is because the spike protein produced by all vaccines on the market is the known causative agent for long COVID. The man responsible for finding this is Dr. Bruce Patterson, President of IncelDX and CovidLongHollers.com. He is the world cytokine and chemokine expert, which are substances like interleukin and interferons that act like neurotransmitters for your immune system. They may also be called immunotransmitters. His findings of spike-infected CD16 immune cells being the cause of long COVID due to their ability to cause angiogenesis, which is blood vessel formation, inflammation, which is a hyperimmune response, and cytokinemia, which is the persistence of immunotransmitters, which can cause neurodegeneration on their own, is well documented and linked in the Public Health Notice that was provided. His data has been so conclusive and in line with clinical results that his protocol has improved the health of over 50,000 patients in the United States, and the government of Australia has contracted with his firm to do testing for their entire population. If sovereign governments have already reacted by implementing his solution and treatments for their entire population, then we can only ask why this body and the Department of Health this body is given charge over continue to ignore this information to the detriment of the public health they are sworn to protect. We are happy to provide any further information to your commission or the Department of Health it needs in order to designate the spike protein for alpha strain B117 as a biologic agent, and ensure notice of possible healthcare-associated infection of long COVID is provided for anyone offered a medical countermeasure or vaccine. Due to language contained within Section 564 of the FDCA where risks, as well as to the extent they are unknown, must be disclosed. How is it possible to justify persisting a public health threat without providing relevant notice? It isn't, especially when considering NCGS 138-41 and 138-144, where criminal penalties exist for their failure. The FDA recognizes this Board as legal stakeholders in vaccine distribution, and federal courts struck down the federal vaccine mandates due to case law that found the distribution of vaccines to be non-economic activity, and therefore to be under the Tenth Amendment placing state jurisdiction and statutes as the primary venue to seek remedy. If we don't have a response in the next 10 days, we'll go to press, notify them of this liability, and/or seek to enforce the resultant criminal or civil liabilities. Many blessings.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other Members of the public who wish to address the Board during public comment or speak during public comment? All right. Thanks to everyone who took some time to come out and share their perspectives during public comment. Okay. The next item, we've got two items under good news. The first is the 2023 Governor's Volunteer Service Award. And Jennifer's here to help us with this. Good afternoon.
It is my pleasure to present this year's Governor's Volunteer Service Award, which honors the true spirit of volunteerism by recognizing individual groups, businesses, that make significant contribution to their community through volunteer services. The award program created by the Office of the Governor in 1979 recognizes North Carolina's most dedicated volunteer. Through the years, this award has been honored thousands who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their community. Buncombe County began accepting nominations for the 2023 Governor's Volunteer Service Award around November of 2022. And in April, we received all winners for our county. And we would like to take a moment to properly acknowledge them since they are often without reward or recognition for the integral work to our community, offering their time and energy to important causes. This year's Volunteer Service Awards for Buncombe County goes to Land of Sky Association of Realtors, which unfortunately, they did not come, but we would still like to recognize them. Land of Sky Association of Realtors consistently goes above and beyond what many think the normal role of Realtors should be. Their organization strives to foster an ethical and exceptional real estate environment for their clients by focusing on education, advocacy, and connection, and they constantly host informal lunch-and-learn sessions on board range of helpful topics. In 2022, Land of Sky Association of Realtors took on the monumental task of working with the Buncombe County Property Assessment Team on a pilot project to help residents and property owners develop a better understanding of their property value. Realtors attended trainings that provided the community a walkthrough on how to access and understand their property record, how to use Buncombe County tax websites, and how to work effective property values, the property values of pure process tax relief, and more. Buncombe County Property Assessment Team is grateful for their hard work and commitment to help Buncombe County property owners expand their acknowledgement and connect to resources. And we will make sure to mail them their award and their pens. And this year, Buncombe County Volunteer was awarded the Governor's Medal for their outstanding service to our community, Habitat for Humanity. Tricia and Charlie Frank, who are here today to be recognized, are locally -- please feel free to come up. You're welcome to come up if you would like. Tricia and Charlie Frank have been volunteering for Habitat for Humanity locally and internationally for more than 15 years. Since moving to Buncombe County in 2010, the Franks have been involved -- you are perfectly fine. Since moving to Buncombe County in 2020, the Franks have been involved within many different volunteer opportunities at Asheville area Habitat for Humanity. As educators developing and implementing the Student Build Program was particularly rewarded for dual and especially impactful for the organization and community at large. The program the Franks developed and implemented brings together high school students who are often rivals on the field and unites them around the shared goal of safe, decent housing for all. Since inception, Asheville Habitat Student Build Program has grown, and in 2022, six schools participated. Collectively, they raised $55,000 to sponsor a Habitat home, and the student helped build it. Some schools have also integrated affordable housing education in their curriculum. Five house student build have been built in Buncombe County today, thanks to Charlie and Tricia's leadership and dedication. In addition, over the years, Charlie has been a core volunteer on the construction site in the Restor and with his construction. He has partnered with homeowners and Habitat neighborhood to build little free libraries for residents, and he'll build the Little Free Library at Shiloh Community Guarding, using recycling materials from the Asheville Habitat Restore. Tricia has been instrumental to the Women Build Program, which invites women to advocate for affordable housing fundraisers and building our community. Since 1994, Asheville's Women's Build Program has built 18 homes and raised over $850,000. Tricia serves on the Board of Directors and Virus Committees, including the Global Engagement Committee, having an issue connected with Habitat for Humanity when workers overseas and international educators. The couple has since led 15 service learning build trips for students and adults to various countries around the world. So we take this moment to say thank you to both the organizations that volunteered who won today and those who did not get recognized today. Thank you. And this is Tricia, and thank you so much for your amazing work. We do have a certificate as well. Tricia and Charlie both were awarded, and their individual pins as well. Thank you for all your hard work, and we look forward to our nominations for next year. Have a great day.
Thanks, Jennifer. Great job. The next item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rachel Sawyer Nygaard here. I'll wait for the slides to come up and the audio to be fixed. I'm here to talk with you this evening about the good news related to the Creative Equity Mural Project. A year ago, I was here in the chambers with you. One moment. Next slide, please. Pitching the idea of a mural project. So Buncombe County owns lots of facilities and buildings, and the idea was to beautify those public spaces, thank you, with mural art. So a quick recap, since a year has gone by, we are now celebrating the completion of the first two mural projects. So we took applications through a call for submissions last November and went through a review process with both internal and community partner reviewers to help select these murals that would reflect the themes of equity and inclusion and belonging and beautify our public spaces, and announced to the Board of Commissioners in the spring the selection of artists. And tonight, we celebrate two that have been completed so far. Beginning with Leslie Reynalte Yanko. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Leslie's here with us in a moment. She'll tell you a little bit about her work. This is a mural that she has installed on the wall along Hilliard Street behind the Tax Office, which is located at 94 Cox Avenue. And the title of her mural is "Eres Un Orgullo Latino," and it means in English, "You are Latin pride." And she installed this mural under the support of her mentors and technical advisors and fiscal agent that she'll thank as she talks a little bit about the mural.
Hello, all. I am humbled to present my latest mural, "Eres Un Orgullo Latino," centered in the heart of Asheville, North Carolina. This vibrant work is a testament to the resilience, diversity, and unity of the Latino community, while also highlighting the contributions to Asheville's social fabric. The 2,590-square-foot mural depicts 12 figures from the Latino community. It pictures members from all walks of life and their different goals. The quotes above each character are in both Spanish and English. The mural is a mixed media work using house-grade acrylic and spray paint. With its creative atmosphere, Asheville provides the perfect canvas for this mural. By situating the mural in a prominent public space, I hope it creates conversation for bridging gaps between cultures and fostering an appreciation for the strength that stems from embracing one's heritage. May it be a source of inspiration for generations to come, empowering them to embrace their unique identities and walk with pride. I would personally like to thank my mentors, Gus Cuddy and Catherine Crawford, and Katie Cornell with Arts Abiel.
Okay. Great job.
Gus is here in the room. I'd like you to wave, and Katie is here as well. They were really helpful in navigating all of those things that come along with mural installation, and I was very pleased to get to know Leslie and enjoyed getting to know her, and wanted to emphasize again that she's a product of our local Buncombe County schools. Our next artist that has completed a mural is Gabriel Enguetz. And Gabe has installed a mural on the building that houses the Register of Deeds, which is at 205 College Street. Gabe is a Durham-based artist who's joining us by Zoom, so those of you at the podium can see him coming on the screen now. And Gabe partnered with a local organization called Arteria Collective and worked with three young apprentices, youth, who helped with the community engagement portion of his project, and he'll tell you a little bit about the mural now.
Hey, Gabriel, thanks for being with us.
Hello, Rachel. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
So Rachel, for some reason, I can't hear you and haven't been able to. Are you on mute still on my end?
Can she hear you, Brownie? I mean, can he hear you?
Can you hear me, Gabriel? I think it's just muted. Okay. Oh, right.
Do you want me to just dive in? Give me a thumbs up?
You're ready to go.
Okay, I can hear you now. Thank you. Yeah, so for this project, you know, it came across my computer through a friend who lives in Asheville. I'm currently, you know, practicing and living in Durham, North Carolina. This piece really caught my attention. Asheville is a place I love to visit, and, you know, the theme of equity really resonated with me. And when I applied, you know, I know there wasn't a required community engagement campaign, but for me, as somebody not from Buncombe County, I really wanted to engage the community, something that I've done for many projects for municipalities across the state. And I wanted to incorporate that into this project. And, you know, working with Rachel, she was very instrumental in connecting me with various, you know, community organizers and a group called Arteria Collective, which is a wonderful organization in Asheville that provides programming for a lot of young people through the arts to, you know, push for social change in their communities. So we actually ended up hiring three apprentices from Arteria Collective, Ray, Isla, and Ariel, who, you know, are three high school-aged kids from Buncombe County, and they were great in connecting with the community there. You know, they were very knowledgeable of the area. And what we did, we actually went out and talked to people directly in person to acquire feedback on what equity means to people in Buncombe County. So we went to events like, you know, Juneteenth celebrations back in the month of June. We also went to, or I attended some reparations community meetings in town, so that was very eye-opening for me, as well as other educational free events that were open to the public that were mostly focused on the history of marginalized communities, specifically Black communities in Buncombe County and specifically in Asheville. So I was able to learn so much in that week talking to folks and also learning from the feedback that my apprentices acquired. And after going through all that information, the main request or the main talking point was housing. So this piece actually, that you see here, is mostly focused on housing and celebrating these neighborhoods that are historically Black, that have been, you know, that have been affected by past transgressions like, you know, urban renewal and redlining. So this piece, I really wanted to honor the legacy, make sure the culture of these neighborhoods was presented for people to ask questions. You know, what is Stumptown? You know, what is Southside? These places that are, you know, kind of in the past now, but you still have some community members holding on and living in these neighborhoods. The meaning of this piece, you know, there's a lot of symbolism. Birds are ancient symbols of freedom, so you have a mating pair of native red-winged blackbirds, a male and a female. The male is the more brightly colored one with the red wing spots. The female is the one on the right, which is a little more subdued in color. But, you know, that, to me, represented a family. Also, the tree itself represents family and genealogy. And you have these two hands that you can see as well, which are almost in a first-person view helping construct this nest. There's other details, like, you know, there's a pencil within the nest. You know, oftentimes, you find birds used, you know, found objects that are often human. So you have a pencil in there, which is actually reads Stevens Lee High on it, which is the old, you know, Black high school, the Castle on the Hill, as they call it. And that, you know, to me, I wanted to just honor the legacy of Black educators in the area that were, you know, so important for creating, you know, generations of educated people in the area. And, you know, that school closed down right after integration, so, you know, just tapping back into the history that I was able to learn after speaking to so many people, especially older generations, which were still in Asheville. You have a house in the nest, which is pretty self-explanatory, again, tapping into the housing theme that was so prevalent. And then you also have these banners, which are, you know, hanging within the branches, you know, flowing throughout, and that's where we really wanted to highlight and celebrate some of these neighborhoods. You know, there's no single item that really represents these neighborhoods visually, so we wanted to spell that out and make sure that was very clear. And, you know, the wonderful part about this piece is its location. You know, I love high-impact walls and it being right on the Register of Deeds building, across from the courthouse. You have a great view. The best view, actually, is from the courthouse windows on the upper floors. I would encourage you, go check it out if you have time. But this piece, you know, the thing I think I love most about public art, you know, it should always speak for people in place. And when I do projects like this, especially outside of my hometown, which is Durham, I get to learn so much and connect with so many communities I would never normally connect with. And, you know, just very honored that Buncombe County was so forthcoming and really embraced and welcomes me when talking with them and creating artwork for them. And, you know, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. It's been really wonderful.
Great, Gabriel. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you for your patience with the technology. Glad that we were able to bring Gabe in virtually and you were able to meet Leslie in person. Like Gabe mentioned, we're excited about public art and what that, where that could go for us as a county government. Before we move on past the Creative Equity Mural Project, we still have one more project to go. Jared Wheatley could not be here this evening. He is working on the preliminary stages of the mural that he'll be installing at the parking deck at 164 that he'll be installing at the parking deck at 164 College Street through the Indigenous Walls Project. He's currently doing some collaboration and community engagement on the Kualab boundary with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, both on the, the language or the syllabary side, as well as the design and basket weave and cultural elements. So looking forward to more good news to come. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, thanks Rachel. And so I just want to say, you know, great job to everyone involved in this. It was obviously a great idea when it came forward and, but it's just turned out so well. So thank you to everyone who kind of originated this idea and to Leslie and Gabriel may not be able to hear us anymore, but, you know, just, they're just really amazing and beautiful. So thank you for sharing your talents with our community. It's really an amazing contribution, so really appreciate all of you. Alright, look forward to seeing the next ones. Go forward too. Okay, the next item on the agenda under Presentations, we have the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. Updates, so thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon Commissioners, and we'll see if the technology works for us. My name is Ray Hemichandram, Vice Chair of the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. I'm with Dr. Amy Russell. I was going to be presenting with me. And in the audience, we have, oops, in the audience? Is that better? Good. In the audience, we have Kate Berger, who's our Chair. And I also want to recognize the staff we have in the audience. Rachel, who just left the room, and Sarah Joss. Staff, county staff do such an amazing, steadfast, excellent job supporting the committee in its work. So we're just going to give an update about the program. And wow, the clicker's working, that's great. The committee's purpose is to make strategic partnership grant investment recommendations to the Board of Commissioners each year. Fund to the amount of nine, approximately $900,000 each year. Strategic partnership grant funding is granted to nonprofit organizations or nonprofit-aligned projects working toward outcomes in alignment with board goals. It was formed in 2020, now in its fourth funding year. I'm on my third year on the committee. We just have the members of the committee listed here. Again, recognizing Kate in the audience. And I'm going to go past that one and talk about the grant cycle, because we're just starting the grant cycle. It's the, the grant year began on July 1st, so we're early in that grant year. This is the time of the year where county staff is doing grant monitoring and support. And the committee itself is working on process improvement. Grant applications happen mid-winter, December through February, and the committee reviews in the spring, from March to May, with the awards happening in June with county, with Commissioner approval. Activities in the past year, in July, we had the Grantee Cohort Call. That is for orientation for, for folks who have gotten grants. In the fall, we conduct our site visits. And we do them in person and we do them virtually. And I, the, all the committee members love those site visits. We're, we're kind of representing the county in some capacity out in the community and really seeing the work being done with the grants, the funds you're providing. So thank you. In January, there's a grant writing workshop, again, that aligns with when the grants are opened up. So that way, organizations that have less experience in grant writing can get some support from county staff. Grants are reviewed February through March. And then we meet repeatedly to kind of make sure where we want to be. And we're representing the values of the county and the goals of the county appropriately. Fund finalized, funding recommend, recommendations, pardon me, happen in April, and it comes to you. And then we, we loop around back to process improvement discussions. Next slide? There we go. Current grant eligibility, nonprofits in active operation for at least two years. Projects that meet a public purpose and align with county strategic plan. That is our four categories are education, environment, well-being, and economy. Funding is limited to more than three years for a single project, but not for an organization. That is, after three years, an organization could do a different project or even do a different project overlapping with, with an existing project. Funding is limited to less than 30% of organization's annual operating budget to ensure that nonprofits don't become too reliant on county funds. And back one slide? Okay, whoops. I'm working on it. There we go, yay. So this is a summary of fiscal year 2024 grant requests. You can see that the funded amount of $900,000, that the requested amount was 3.6 times the funded amount, just showing the need just of the organizations that are active enough to apply for this kind of funding. 16 of the projects were renewal, of the 71 projects requested were renewal applications. 55 were new project proposals, which is a good sign. It shows that we're getting word out there about the program and more organizations are applying for more projects. It does show the need as well. Scoring is based on need for the project, project plan, proposed results, equity, and organizational capacity. Those are scoring areas. And I'm going to see if I can go to the next slide and turn it over to Dr. Russell.
So before I go into the priority areas, there is a list of the awardees at the end of the packet, just if you want to reference that. But we did want to share with you how the, the funding was distributed by priority area. And you can see, if this works. Okay, so you can see here, under education, we had 13 projects that requested over $700,000, and we awarded eight projects over $300,000. And that was 62% of applications funded. In environment, we had six projects and awarded two projects of $35,000. And that was 33% of applications funded. Under well-being, we had 42 projects, over a million, of almost 2 million. And we awarded 10 projects of $375,000. And in economy, there were 10 projects of $394,000, and we awarded three projects of over $130,000. So you can see about a third of projects with a little bit more in education were awarded for the total of $900,000 awarded. And this is a breakdown by each one of those categories in terms of what, what additional category, subcategory was awarded. So under educated and capable community, we had $88,000. Under adult education, $270,000. Under K-12 education. Environmental stewardship, the $35,000 was under soil and water quality. Under vibrant community, financial well-being was $60,000. Small business, $70,000. And then resident well-being, basic needs, food, legal, safety, and wellness all had some funding related to that. Feel free to pause, pause me if you have any questions. So I know there's interest in how the funding is distributed. It was really important for us as committee members, not just to fund high-quality projects, but to make sure that funding was distributed across the county so that we serve both urban and rural and all areas of the county. And the way this works is the applicants submit in, in the, the writing of the application, the, the service locations. And then the team actually puts that together into this map. And so we do see distribution across the county based on the, the grants that were awarded. So to talk about some highlights of the process, I was new to the process this year. And so came in with fresh eyes. And I was incredibly impressed with the app, the applicants. So it was amazing to read all the rich proposals and to really have pride in our county and all the things that people are doing to try to improve and, and support our community members. The projects were of great diversity of all these categories and really high quality. I was not able to do site visits, being new to the committee, but I did hear from a lot of committee members that that was really meaningful. And, and we do plan to do that again this year. It helps us engage with the, the grantees and really get to know them and, and see the work that they're doing. On the committee side, a great collaborative committee environment. As a new committee member, a lot of people helped me figure out how to, how to navigate the process. We got a lot of feedback on what was done in the past and what worked and what didn't work. The, the process is very deliberate and intentional. So we were very thoughtful about where bias might come in. Many of the committee members come from areas where they have familiarity with some of the applicants. And we had a lot of conversations about how to, how to avoid bias and how to really focus on meeting the need and, and trying to make sure we were diverse in our application process. And we did decide that we wanted to fund projects at the highest level as we could because we wanted them to be successful. I think there was some concern in prior years that funding projects at a lower level than what they requested may, may have created challenges for them as, in the implementation. And engagement with funded organizations obviously was a, a positive for committee members because they do have familiarity with the community. So, and again, as a new committee member, we had 71 grants. And that seems like a lot to do. And the, the way they organized it and the way the application process works and the process of review was very streamlined and very effective. And so I just really appreciate the team's work to make that happen for us. It's online and you can review side-by-side the, how, how you score the application and the, the content of the application. And we were able to meet as a committee in person and online. So it made it really convenient for those of us who may be in other, other locations doing this work. So process improvement, we're always trying to make the process better. The committee recommends considering additional funding. We had so many great applicants. It was hard to make these decisions in terms of who we would fund. And, and there's a lot of opportunity to do more. We are really interested in expanding the pool of applicants in environment because that was, we didn't have as many applicants. And, you know, to consider expanding more applicants and, and still having a limited funding is, is, it's difficult to think about that. But we just wanted to make that recommendation. Again, through the process, we had recommended an $80,000 limit, but we want to make that a hard cap to open up the possibility for more applicants and to ensure that we can incentivize people with smaller grant applications to come into the process. And we are exploring ways to better assess our ability to serve the entire geographic area of Buncombe County. It's easier said than done. It's pretty easy to see where the service organization is, but the population served is much more difficult. So we're exploring how we can identify that we're doing a good job with that. We've talked about other ways to add additional factors to the scoring to incentivize small, smaller, newer organizations with leaner budgets. We do, we are aware that larger organizations may have grant writers and more resources and can prepare projects in a way that is more appealing to those of us who are, who are grading. But we want to figure out ways to really get new people into the process. And also, we're looking at ways to improve the category. Some, some of the applicants can fall in, in more than one category. And, and we're trying to make sure that we're considering that in the process. So next steps, our staff is working with the grantees on their funding agreements. And you will see that they will be publishing quarterly their performance, and we'll be able to see that as well. And then we expect the committee members to do some site visits as, and we're offering that in person and virtual. And we are already planning for the next grant cycle. And I think that's it. Any questions?
I'll just say, thank you very much. Appreciate all this good information and appreciate the work that you do for this committee. And also, I appreciate the fact that you're continuing to always look at process improvements. And over my time on the commission, I've certainly seen that throughout that time. And so thank you all for your good work and your service to our community and Kate as well.
Thank you all so much. I'm so excited to see how this continues to evolve since 2020. And I know reading 71 grant applications is no easy feat. So let me first say kudos to each of you on the committee for that undertaking in and of itself and really focusing these on metrics and scoring in order to ensure fairness and equity throughout the process and taking the politics out of it, I am incredibly grateful for because I think it ensures that the organizations that are applying for funding that are meeting all of the criteria really do receive the funding that, that they need and that are benefiting residents across Buncombe County. And I'm so pleased to see the map and knowing that you're continuing to look at that as you move forward into this next year and really continuing to focus on how you take the bias out of reviewing grant applications. I know that is not easy. And I really applaud you all for your work and for your time commitment, not only in reading these, but spending time on site visits and getting to know the organizations as well. Thank you all so much.
Great, thank you so much for the update. Thanks for serving. Okay, next, under Presentations, CDBG and our quarterly update. Nancy Williams is here to help us with this. Hey Nancy.
Good afternoon, evening. We're almost there. Thank you for your time. I'll keep it brief. You've got a long meeting tonight. So tonight, I'm presenting the second quarter update. And this is required by the North Carolina Department of Commerce to do these for you. So this is the general information. We've got, this is a $400,000 grant that was awarded in December by the North Carolina Department of Commerce for Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Efforts. And we are utilizing this for prioritizing home repairs for up to $30,000 per resident. Hopes that this helps keep people in their homes, maybe aging in community, keeping them safe and healthy. Serving low and moderate income homeowners outside the city of Asheville, since they have their own entitlement funds. And this will be managed by nonprofit subrecipients managing the home repair program. And then we will have expenditure updates once we have a subrecipient and are working on actual, having these homes identified. So we are, have gone through the whole award process, the request for project proposals. We're now at the point of selecting the subrecipients from the applications. This just gives you an outline of all of the steps that we will be going through in this process. So in the last quarter, we put out the first RFP for the funding level at $15,000 to $30,000 as part of our program that we had designed with Commerce and what was approved. There actually was no response to that RFP, which was very disappointing. So with feedback from our local nonprofit partners who do home repairs, there was an indication that liens, which was going to be a part of this with Commerce requirements, did not actually meet the needs of our homeowners and was actually a barrier to their applications for this funding. So that was good information. So we went back to Commerce, revised the program, and had put out a second RFP so that we could reduce those level of investments so it's below that lien level. So there's no deed and promissory note required, which is definitely more opened up our ability to attract applicants for this process. So now we are actually in the process of reviewing the applications, the subrecipient selection. And then we will be going to contract in September. So that'll come in the, the next report for you. Thank you. So this will be the overall process, what's remaining. So we'll just move through these every time I come back with a report for you. Just all the steps. This project will actually be going through 20 June of 2025 is when we will be actually concluding it and closing out. So that'll be our, our timeframe for this. And hopefully we'll be moving to identifying homes to be repaired soon. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks Nancy. Appreciate the update. Alright, and then the last presentation is on the Affordable Parking Program. And Tim Love is here to present this item.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Pleased to be here to speak this evening about the Affordable Parking Program. about the Affordable Parking Program, provide an update. We have a few slides for you to get us through today. So we'll wait for those to come up. But our purpose today is really to provide an update to Commission on kind of where we've been and then where we're headed based on direction provided by Commission. So program updates, we'll hear how we've been doing at Cox Avenue or Sears Alley, as well as our proposed next steps for the College Street Deck. So program overview, I know y'all are familiar with this, but for the members of the public or those that are not, Commissioners approved the Affordable Parking Program in November of 2022. And then staff, staff launched that program with the support of Preferred Parking in December of 2022. The plan was to issue 150 Affordable Parking passes at the Cox Avenue Parking Garage, which is what we call it, but it's technically addressed as 11 Sears Alley. There was eligibility criteria associated with this and those criteria on the screen, but in general, purpose of the parking program was to assist those below 80% AMI, so of low to moderate income. There were some additional requirements with the program, valid driver's license, since this is a parking program, the need for a credit card that could draw down the program and additionally to be 18 or older. As a refresher, the, the monthly pass that's available is at $40 a month, which is over half of a reduction on the, the market rate that was charged at this deck. So that's the program overview. No changes there, but just to reiterate for those that are with us today. So how do we do? Since the launch in December of 2022, we received 167 eligible applications and all 167 of those applications were contacted. So each application had an email or a telephone number, Preferred Parking reached out to all 167. Of those 167, 75 have enrolled. And so that's as we speak today. The average wage of these participants is about $16 an hour. Additionally, that 75 enrolled number means that we have about a 50% vacancy rate in the program. So of the 150 slots available, only 75 are filled, 50%. We had a cancel rate that was relatively low. Six folks signed up and then did not continue their subscription, which we would expect to happen. And so based on the vacancy rate and based on the way that we rolled out this program, if you recall, we set up an application process where we had a two-week window to collect applicants rather than going to a first come, first served program. The thought process at the time, which I feel was sound, was from an equity standpoint, to give more people the opportunity to have access to the program. Since we've seen a 50% uptake, we feel that it's appropriate at this time to move to a first come, first served program. That way, folks that are eligible for the program can get access to it in real time and not have to wait around for application windows. So we feel strongly about that and we'll move forward with that and we'll do that effective immediately. Additionally, we want to increase our marketing efforts. We had great support from a number of organizations in the community, including Jen Hampton and her team, the Downtown Association, AIR and others. So we'll continue marketing through those that are the closest to the folks that we want to apply to the program. So those are changes that we expect to move forward effective immediately. But wanted to give you some additional depth on kind of what happened. So from a utilization perspective, we've got just a simple bar chart here structured around months. And each of these numbers reflects basically the number of times someone has entered the deck. And so, and when I say entering the deck, as a member of our Affordable Parking Program. So you can see anywhere between 850 and almost 1,000 entries in and out of the deck amongst those 75 people. The message here is that the program's being utilized. We didn't, you know, there were concerns at the time, potentially, well, folks may not use them. This shows us clearly that the program's getting utilized by those that are eligible. Additionally, wanted to take a next step and try to translate this into what we'll call kind of a cost savings. So the whole purpose of the program is to benefit those that are low to moderate income that need parking resources. So we made an attempt to translate this into a cost. If we could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And so what we've done here, this isn't exact, we haven't interviewed our, our eligible applicants, but you can see if we take the general cost of how long it would take to park in this deck for an eight-hour period in a day and translate that to each of our applicants based on the number of times we think they've been in our deck, you can see there's a monthly savings of anywhere between $60 and almost $80 a month per person. So said another way, you know, this is, you know, a trip to the grocery store, a couple of tanks of gas, you know, a rent payment over the course of a year. So the story here, the problems, the program is working. There's a genuine cost savings to those that participate. And for that reason, we want to expand the program and keep it going. So any questions on anything I've shared there? So with that said, I've been before y'all before and talked about potential next steps on the College Street Deck. And so just want to provide an update there. So what we did, similar to the Cox Avenue Deck, we surveyed the folks that we thought would be interested in the program. That survey was issued in January. We had about 160 participants. 72% said they would likely participate in the program. 68% earned less than $20 an hour. And you can see on the map, maybe hard to see on your screen, but generally you can see where folks are clustered, where they work in and around town. There were other survey considerations. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but the, the general idea, we asked people like, what are your concerns around parking and other things? In general, consistent feedback, please have more spaces at more locations. And so that's why we're here today. Additionally, there have been questions about safety. We've addressed some of those at, at the Cox Avenue Deck through additional security, call boxes, things of that nature. But also some additional areas for us to focus on, you know, making sure that we consider that income fluctuates for folks. And so throughout a season, people may become ineligible over time. And we also heard that, you know, folks would like to, you know, be able to share a pass with a coworker and things of that nature. So we took that survey analysis and then had to do a little bit of looking at ourselves. You know, what's different about the Cox Avenue Deck and our College Street Deck is our College Street Deck has a, a great influx of traffic in particular, in particular related to the judicial complex. You know, folks are coming in and out of jury duty, doing a number of things. We're also adjacent to this building, of course, and so there's a number of folks that park there. So we wanted to make sure that before we rolled out a program, we were considering current usage of the existing deck. And so we've done that. And so we did a survey of, to see how many folks were coming in and out of the deck. We looked at three weeks in early spring. And what we found during these three weeks was our max usage. So the, the most that the deck was ever full was about 70%. And you can see on the right, there's kind of an, a line graph that shows you kind of peak capacity during those points. Additionally, anecdotally, we, we know that the deck is busier during sort of early morning hours, you know, thinking the mornings, less busy at night. So with all that said, and considering some potential changes with, you know, the facility study and other things, staff is recommending moving forward with 50 slots at the College Street Deck to make those available effective immediately and then evaluating that over time to see kind of what changes occur. As recently as last week, I was notified that our parking was all the way up to the rooftop and that we needed to be careful about how many spots we offered. And so we, we just want to make sure that we're not oversubscribing and then frustrating folks. So our proposal is to go forward with 50 spots, evaluate it over time. We'll be back before the Commission to kind of let you know how it goes. So next steps, barring any feedback from Commission, staff's ready to move forward. We've got 75 spots at Cox Avenue that we feel should be filled as soon as we can. Additionally, we'd like to roll out these new 50 slots and then ideally continue to evaluate this program on an ongoing basis. Our program relaunch says tomorrow, which I, I think is totally feasible, but what I would propose is that we move to Monday, 8/21. That way, we give folks just a little bit of time, since this is a first come, first served program, to catch up through the weekend and apply beginning on Monday for both decks. And then folks will be contacted by Preferred Parking, just as they were if they're eligible, and we'll continue rolling the program forward. Are there any questions?
We need a motion for that.
Doesn't sound like we need to vote to approve it. The wheels are already in motion to do this because I think we've kind of approved the concept before. So this is just if, if anybody had any concerns, we could slow it down. But if we don't, then it, it moves ahead. Great. A great update. Thanks, thanks Tim. And Terry, did you have a question or a comment? Okay, okay, great. Well, keep us posted. And yeah, and thanks for helping to get the word out on this. It's, we've heard a lot of positive feedback on it. So it's really helping a lot of people. I mean, after housing, for a lot of people, transportation is their next highest expense. And there's different things that go into it. But for people who work downtown, the parking part of it is one of the biggest parts. So providing people in our workforce with an affordable way to get to, close to where their work is really very valuable. So we're really appreciate everyone working on this and look forward to further updates.
Absolutely. Thank you all for the leadership.
Appreciate it. Thanks Tim. Okay. All right, we have two public hearings. The first is on the Long Shoals Business Center
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Haley Matvis and this is the review of ZPH 2023-00019, Long Shoals Business Center zoning map amendment. So the newly adopted comp plan has replaced the 2013 land use plan as the guiding document for rezonings. Staff recommendations are based on the GEC land use characters, the plans, policies and actions, spot zoning analysis, neighborhood consistency, and the equity analysis tool. The hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That includes the legal ad in the Citizen Times newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, a notice on the county's website, a physical posting on the property. And I do apologize, these are the wrong dates. These are the dates from the planning board public hearing and the correct dates are August 4th for all of the postings. And today is the public hearing on August 15th. So. The applicant is, and the applicant and owner is the Long Shoals Business Center LLC. And the address is 565 Long Shoals Road. The property is 4.97 acres. It's currently used as warehousing and storage and it's served by Public Water and MSD Sewer. The applicant has applied to rezone the property from the current neighborhood service zoning district to commercial service. You can see the current zoning map on the left and the proposed zoning map on the right. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the two zoning districts. If the zoning request is approved, the required setbacks of the property lines would change from 10 feet in the front, seven feet on the sides and 15 feet in the rear to 10 feet on all sides. And the maximum height in the district would increase. In addition, the types of uses on the property would increase as well. Currently, the neighborhood service zoning district is a lower intensity mixed use district. Commercial service zoning would allow for uses such as commercial planned unit developments, manufacturing and processing, motor vehicle impoundment yard, cargo freight terminals, operations and activities, storage and warehousing, healthcare facilities and more. The surrounding developments include warehousing and storage, single-family residential homes, a medical office, and vacant commercial land. The subject parcel is located in the mixed use neighborhood area on the GEC map in the comp plan. As stated in the staff report, the commercial service zoning district is not consistent with this character area. However, with further evaluation of the Long Shoals corridor and the conditions on the ground, the commercial service zoning district is consistent with the parcel. It's helpful to keep in mind that the GEC map is a broad policy tool that generally defines large parts of the county into land use areas. It is not a parcel by parcel review. And we do expect some changes to occur to the GEC over the next 20 years through rezonings. We will closely document and evaluate these The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning on the July 17th meeting. Staff is also recommending approval. And if you have any questions for the staff report, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thanks Haley. Commissioners, any questions at this time? If not, we'll open the public hearing. All right. I'll open the public hearing at 6:10 PM. And I know there was one person that signed up to, wanted to speak during the public hearing, which is, Lee Yu who? Okay. All right. Thanks for being with us.
Hi. They're, they're not native speakers. I'm, I'm a family friend because my wife's part of the Taiwanese American community here. So I just thought I'd summarize what they told me before the meeting started, which is that they have no immediate plans to do anything differently, but they, they, you know, would like the flexibility and the chance to do it. They think maybe they would have fewer, you know, fewer months without any, anyone to rent to. It would give them greater flexibility, more, more opportunities to develop a lot. They've noted that the, their immediate neighbor has already, you know, has that zoning. They're on a section of Long Shoals, you know, they're on the west side of it. So there's not really a problem with, with traffic there. And that's about it. And do you, do you guys have any questions for them?
During the hearing, we're just going to listen. If we have any questions, we can ask them after the hearing.
Yeah. Just really, really the greater flexibility, the more use is permitted, they, they would, they would find it convenient. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak during the public hearing? Okay. If there's not, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:11 PM. So Commissioners, are there any questions?
Just one question Haley. During the planning board meeting, was there any public comment or community outcry that we should be aware of or?
No, no one showed up.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. The next public hearing is on a rezoning request from the Warren Wilson property.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shannon Capizali and this is the review of ZPH 2023-00021, the Warren So this hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties were notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That included a legal ad in the Citizen Times newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, a notice on the county's website, and physical posting on the site. The applicant is William H. Christie on behalf of the owner, Warren Wilson College, and the property is located at 111 Upper College Road in Swananoa. The area to be rezoned is a 4.5 acre portion of the 1,000 acre total property. It's currently in residential use on the college's land and it'll be served by Public Water and MSD Sewer System. The application is to rezone a portion of the property from R2 Residential District to PS Public Service. That will allow it to match the rest of the current zoning on the site. And you can see the current zoning map on the left side of the slide and the proposed rezoning on the right side. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the two zoning districts. And if the rezoning request is approved, the minimum allowed lot size would decrease, the required setbacks off of property lines would increase, and the maximum allowed height of structures would also increase. The type of uses allowed on the property would increase as well. Current Currently, R2 zoning is primarily a residential district. PS zoning would allow uses such as commercial planned unit developments, greenhouses, hotels, medical clinics, restaurants, and more. And the surrounding developments include single-family and multifamily residential, vacant lands, and then the Warren Wilson College which surrounds this area. At their July 17th meeting, the Buncombe County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning and staff also recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions about this.
All right, thanks Shannon. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
Same question as before, any public comment that we need to be concerned about?
No.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:15 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing at 6:16 PM. Commissioners, any further discussion or motion?
I'm over the approval.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion to approve the requested rezoning to public service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we come to the county manager's report, Avril. Any items? Okay, great. We have no old business items, so new business, approval of child protective services investigation, situational overview, recommendations, and recruitment incentive. Sharon Burke from HR is here to help us out with this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the investigations division within Health Human Services is simultaneously experiencing heavy turnover due to resignations and transfers and a shortage of qualified applicants to fill positions. The result is negatively affecting the county's ability to meet state mandates for caseloads. And so as you, you see on the slide, we have taken some steps already to remedy this situation. You know, and we need to maintain these investigation staff to do ongoing, due to ongoing resignation and transfers, our workload balance to comply with state standards that are currently being exceeded. And the lack of applicants for investigation positions is continuing. So we have been looking at this issue for a little while. And back in May, on the left side, you'll see where the average of investigations was taking about 29.7 days. And on average now, on, you know, August 4th, it was taking 36.9. And as you go through, I won't go through each one of these, these points, but what I can do is that we have a little bit of positive movement. And I wanted to share with you since we had created the slide on 8/4, some of those positive movements. So while there is no change in the time it takes to get the investigations pushed through, we have been able to hire an additional social worker, so now we have nine vacancies. The caseload has come down a little bit, but we thought that was gonna happen because we're in the low portion of our cases. We expect, fully expect it to increase in a few weeks when, when the students go back to school. So right now, we have 197 cases and that's about 13 cases per employee. And then on top of that, we still have repurposed seven of our other social workers into those positions to assist them. And we have had some success in our temporary staffing agency where we've been able to, or getting ready to onboard two new social workers from Spark. That's some good news. So we've made some implemented changes and what we have done is looked at our job descriptions and we made some changes to the degrees which hopefully remove some barriers there. We, again, I, we have executed a temporary contract with Spark to, to bring in some social workers. And then we have significantly increased our advertising. So one of the things that we did also do is we did a, a market survey and we put the findings through the regional price parity. And what we're finding is that we have not been able to be competitive. And out of the 18 sampled counties, we are 11th. And so recommendations that we bring forward to you today is that we implement a $200 per pay period stipend that would be given to our investigators and the supervisors within that, that unit. And that would be an estimate of about $5,200 for each employee for the full year. Then we're looking at reviewing the investigative classification specifically. When you look at the social workers, not all of the social workers have the investigation portion of that and we want to make sure that, that we're being competitive and that they're graded correctly. And we'll be bringing forward any recommendations into the fiscal '25 pay plan. And the next is recruitment incentive. And what we're looking at doing is adding a $750 recruitment incentive. And what that would be done is paid out in three separate installments. The first installment would be 250 after the employee has, the new hire has been in place for one week and then another 250 when they've been here six months. And then final, when they've been here one full year, round out that 250. And that would be to Buncombe County employees. And during this process, no additional fund is being requested from you all. It's gonna be coming from lab salaries. So this is just a, a sample or a, these are the, the organizations that we did our, our surveys through. So unless you have any questions, what we'd be looking at is for the board to make a recommendation specifically to approve temporary allowance for child protective services, IETSWs, and their supervisors, as well as approve a recruitment incentive for existing employees to recruit new hires into the CPS, Public Safety Communications, which is our 911 telecommunications, and then our detention officers.
Motion to approve the recommendations? Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks Sharon.
Thank you very much.
All right, and then the last item under new business is consideration of the General Electric Healthcare Finance Services LLC's tax refund request. Kurt Euler will present this item.
Thank you, Chair, Members of the Commission. Thank you very much. I am here to talk about a tax refund request made by General Electric Healthcare Finance Services LLC. And I want to make one point that GE wanted to make very clear. That is not the local, our local GE Aerospace. There are numerous divisions of GE and this is their financing arm. And so this is not, not a request from the local. This, and this is, and so just to be clear on that. So we have not had one of these before. So I'm going to go through sort of a brief rundown of the general statute that is applicable and talk about the facts of this case and then present you with some of the law. So with that being said, all right, so the first thing is, is basically pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105-380, the governing body is prohibited from releasing refunding or compromising taxes within its jurisdiction. And basically, the statute also states that any tax that shouldn't have been refunded may be recovered from a member or members of the governing body who voted for the refund. So that's something to keep in mind when issuing tax refunds. So a taxpayer may request a refund from the county for the following reasons. A tax imposed through a clerical error and a legal tax or a tax levied for an illegal purpose. We do not need to deal with a clerical error or a tax levied for an illegal purpose. The question tonight is an illegal tax. And some examples of illegal taxes are, if the county goes out and we tax exempt property, that's, that's a violation. Taxing property that doesn't exist or that is located in some other jurisdiction. And finally, if we have a tax rate that violates the limits set forth in the general statutes. Those are all examples of illegal taxes. Next slide. So if the commissioners choose to deny the tax request, the taxpayer will have three years from the date of the resolution to bring an action in civil courts or in, you know, basically superior court. If the taxpayer's lawsuit is successful, the county would have to pay 6% interest and costs. The statute and the case law is very unclear as to when the interest begins to run and what actually constitutes cost. So there, there could be additional expenses if a refund is denied and it turns out late in their court case is successful. So I want you to be aware of that. So in this case involves GE is basically alleging that Buncombe County has issued an illegal tax by taxing its business personal property twice. All right? So pursuant to North Carolina Statute 105-274, Buncombe County has the authority to tax all property. Real and personal, personal is subject to taxation unless there's an exemption or excluded by statute. Each year, the taxpayer submits to the county a list of their tangible personal property. Based on that list that they get, the county determines the value and basically assesses a value, much like in real property, how much they value your home. The county will value how much your computers and your machinery or whatnot that you have. So pursuant to 105-306, all tangible personal property shall be listed in the name of the owner on the day which the property is listed for taxation. Normally, it's January 1st and it is the duty of the property owner to list that property. If the property owner doesn't list their tangible personal property and we find out about it, we can go and discover that property and, and collect for that. Okay, so in this case, we're dealing with three separate companies. And I will call them General, General Electric Industrial, GE Capital, and just General Electric Company. They're all separate legal entities. GE Healthcare and Finance is more or less the successor of GE Industrial and GE Capital. All right? So in 2019, 2020, GE Capital submitted a list of equipment that was kept at their Sweeten Creek Plant to the tax assessor. So they submitted a list of all their tangible personal property to the tax assessor. GE Industrial also submitted a list of tangible personal property to the tax assessor. And finally, for 2019 to 2020, GE also submitted a list of tangible personal property to the tax assessor. So you had the three separate entities submitting three separate tax listings. The county basically took those tax listings and determined the value of the property and issued a tax bill for 2019 and 2020 for the tangible personal property. So based on the assessed value, the county sent a tax bill to each entity for 2019 to 2020. None of the entities challenged the valuation of the tangible personal property to the Board of Equalization and Review and each entity paid their tax bill for 2019 and 2020. During an audit in 2022, GE Healthcare, I have GE on the slide, but it's GE Healthcare Finance Services, found that in several instances, GE Capital and GE listed the same personal property on its tangible personal property listing. So let's say they had a machine press. They listed, they alleged that they listed the same press for 2019, 2020. GE also discovered during the audit that GE Industrial also listed the same equipment as GE for their tangible personal property listings for 2019 and 2020. So on July 19th, 2023, we got, or you all received a letter from GE Healthcare on behalf of GE Capital, GE Industrial requesting the tax refund. So it's GE's position that it was taxed twice. The same tangible personal property was taxed twice in tax year 2019 and 2020. GE is arguing or making the argument that it is an illegal tax to tax the same property twice in the same year, which constitutes this concept called double taxation. And double taxation is an illegal tax. GE is requesting that the county refund $279,990, which is its portion of the tangible personal property tax for 2019 and 2020. They've also made a refund request to the city of Asheville and their portion of that would be $227,007. And the total combined of those things is roughly $506,000. So what is double taxation? So double taxation is a legal theory found in, in a lot of treatises, which are kind of books like Encyclopedia of the Law, that basically states that when the taxing authority taxes the same property for the same purpose within the same jurisdiction during the same taxing period, that is not a good thing. Double taxation is not looked at favorably in these legal treatises. I can say that, that our institute of government has also, the, the professor there has said that the double taxation in a 2010 publication also said that double taxation is an illegal tax. However, when researching this, we were unable to find double taxation ever applied by the North Carolina courts. Okay, so we've never seen a North Carolina court saying double taxation is illegal in North Carolina. We have also not found a statute that basically prohibits that. Okay, so what, basically, the law, as we should say, is, is basically these treatises and people's opinions. But we don't have anything that we were really able to like hang our hat on and say, this is a, you know, it either is or isn't. So it's really an open question. What we found was, or what staff found is that the Court of Appeal, the Court of Appeals defines an illegal tax as a tax that's imposed without authority or taxing property that has a valid exemption. Well, the business personal property tax that was assessed is legal in North Carolina. Staff did nothing wrong. Staff basically took the information that it received and processed it. So we have a hard time calling that an illegal tax. In addition, we found case law that stated that overassessment is not one of the valid defenses a taxpayer can use. So overassessment does not equal an illegal tax. We did not find that the North Carolina Constitution expressly prohibited double taxation. We also believe that when GE should have discovered these listing and tax and valuation errors, sooner, and that basically they should have, if they had a problem with the listing, they should have appealed that to the Board of Equalization and Review. And the reason we say that is that if people can come back up to five years later and try to claim tax refunds, that makes it very difficult for us to basically know how much money we're bringing in and how much money, I mean, that affects our budget. So we think that there's an issue about it, that if you submit a listing and you- So we think that there's an issue about it, that if you submit a listing and you have a problem with it, we believe you should be appealing that sooner rather than waiting. So to sum up all that, since GE didn't appeal the listing errors and the county had legal authority to assess the taxpayer, it's based on each taxpayer's listings, staff is recommending to the commissioners to deny the July 19, 2023 request for the business personal property paid in 2019 and 2020 by GE Capital and GE Industrial. We have submitted to you two, two ordinance, or two resolutions. One granting the taxpayers' refund and one not. I do want to say that we've done some further research since the last time that this issue was brought up, and I want to say that I have researched and I have found no case law in North Carolina where commissioners have been sued for granting a tax refund. Okay? So I look for that to make sure that that is not something that happens, and it hasn't happened, and I don't want you to, you know, have that being the sole issue, and I wanted to let you know that. But that's basically what we have. Gilbert, and I'm, I hope I don't mispronounce you.
Latte.
Latte?
Latte.
Late, ah, okay. Gilbert Latte is the attorney for GE Capital, and he came here today, so I'd like to introduce him to you all, in case you have questions for me or for him. But that's basically our presentation. Is there, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Go ahead, too.
Yeah, just for clarity, I want to make sure I understand this. So if, basically, in some ways, it's illegal or against North Carolina statute for us to refund without a valid, one of those valid reasons that you stated, one of those three valid reasons, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you're, and you're legal advised, you're saying that it does not meet one of those three reasons?
We do not believe that based on the case law and the statutes presented, that there is anything that would state that what happened constituted an illegal tax.
Is it, let me just ask this, like, I mean, I think I've followed everything you've presented, I think I get the logic of it, but I'm also just, is it legal to knowingly, because I think the facts are not in dispute in the case, it doesn't sound like, is it legal for us to knowingly collect and keep an incorrect amount of tax money? Because we're supposed to tax all this property in inaccurate and like means, right, like Keith just talked all about it, right? So that's what we're supposed to do, but it sounds like in this case, I mean, it was an administrative error, right? So is it permissible to knowingly collect and keep? I mean, we're acknowledging, they sent in an incorrect amount of money, right?
Yes.
To me, that seems on a basic level, is that legal?
So.
Because we're not, we're acknowledging the amount that was sent in was more than it should have been, exactly twice as much as it should have been, right?
And what you're talking about is, North Carolina Constitution basically states that local government shall assess taxes in a uniform manner, which is basically the doctrine of uniformity.
Right.
And so, yes, it is a question. Can I answer it? I don't have, the problem, I think, with this is that it is pretty much a matter of first impression, that it hasn't gone to the Court of Appeals, that none of this has actually been litigated to the extent where we have any case law, nor do we have the General Assembly having anything in the statutes. Now, on the times when double taxation has been brought up, the North Carolina courts have held, now, mind you, it's different circumstances than a tax listing, a listing error, but the court has said that the Fourteenth Amendment does not prohibit, or does not prohibit double taxation, nor does the North Carolina State Constitution prohibit double taxation. But if you're talking about from a equity standpoint, yeah, I mean, you know, you shouldn't be going out and purposely double taxing, but I think in this situation, you don't have that. It's not like the county said, we're going to tax this property twice. We are basically relying on the accuracy of the information provided to the county from the taxpayer, and I think that is a very different situation than the county just going off and purposely saying, I'm going to tax this homeowner twice.
Yeah, we definitely didn't, we didn't do it on purpose, but we, but we, but we do know now, like, we didn't know then, but we know now.
Brownie, the problem.
Sorry, what, what do you, and then Al, but.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that in 2019, when we received those listings, we went on full faith that they were correct. They have come back five years later and said it was wrong. So I do have to say, the discovery period is five. Had we known that then, they could have appealed just like we do for any resident. So if you're talking like Keith, where the question you asked Keith earlier today is that you're overassessing some homes, they can't come back five years and say, hey, by the way, you're overassessed. So I think it's the same question you asked earlier, when you asked Keith about overassessing residential versus undervaluing others.
Okay, I mean, I'm open to, and Al, you go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the problem I have with this is, we're not dealing with the mom and pop business. We're dealing with a Fortune 500 company. And when they, it takes them five years to catch their mistake, and we have already spent the taxpayer's money, I mean, the money has been spent. I don't think we owe them anything.
I mean, I'm open to the idea that their argument is strong, but that the window to make the case for it has closed. But if, let's just, let's stay with that idea for a minute. Was there a window, or what was, from the staff's perspective, what was the window to detect the administrative error and fix it, and when did that close?
Well, normally, you would submit your listing to the tax department. The tax department would process your, your, yeah.
Can I jump in? If you recall the schedule that Keith showed earlier today, the taxes date on January the 1st, and the appeal process usually ends in mid-April. So every year, you have the opportunity to list and appeal, and that appeal process for boarding E and R ends around mid-April of each year. So within 2019, it would have been mid-April or so of 2019.
And even if your window to appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review has closed, there's still a possibility that you can appeal to the Board of Commissioners.
That's what they're doing, right?
Sure. Can I clarify something with you? So, Mr. the County Attorney? Okay. One thing I just need clarity on, procedurally, I don't see that Buncombe County did anything wrong. We acted on the data that was given to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so by our own standards, we taxed them at the amount that we knew to tax them based on information that they provided to us, and that ended up being incorrect after the fact?
Yes.
Is that a really super low-level summary?
Sure, no, that's, that's, that's.
Can we get a response from their folks about that?
You're more than welcome to ask any question. I have, you know.
Could you clarify that? Where procedurally, where procedurally we did something incorrect based on the information that three different entities gave us?
Thank you, Gilbert Latte, representing GE Healthcare. The point on the unlawfulness, no one's accusing the county of doing anything wrong. It's the fact, as the chairman was mentioning, it's the fact that the same property was taxed twice and a payment was made. Our contention is, that can't be done. The best example I can, this is, by the way, a lessor, lessy, you know, one client was leasing this heavy equipment, the other one was the lessy, both sides ended up paying it. If you're a tenant in a rented house and both you and your landlord's sending a check, one of them should be coming back. That's the basic point on that. It's not that the county did anything wrong, it just can't take the tax twice on the same property. As to the time limit, this is not an overvaluation issue, which would have to go before the Board of Equalization and Review. This is under the statute where the legislature specifically gives someone five years to file an action, you know, to come before you and say, hey, there's been a problem, I need to get my refund back. So the gist of everything that happened here is, the county got paid twice on the same property, yes, as a result of a mistake in the bookkeeping on that end, and after a series, there was originally a letter back in November of last year. It took a while to percolate up to you all, because it had to go through the process. But over that period of time, now it's a formal request for refund, because the position is, as much as everyone loves to give the money to the county to use, it's a windfall to the county. They've had the use of the money as the city, which should never have been paid.
So could I, could I ask Kurt to respond to that point? So the GE position is, this isn't really, the Board of Equalization actually isn't the relevant group to consider this. This isn't a question of, hey, you, you know, your valuation came in, we think it should be this number instead of this number. That's what the Board of Equalization typically does. This is kind of a, does seem like a different kind of question than what we normally use the Board of Equalization to.
This goes straight to you first.
Okay, so I'd like to hear, I appreciate that. I'd like to hear Kurt's response to that.
Sure. I think that, I'm sorry, I, you know, obviously, we may, we may differ. I think that what you're asking, the taxpayer has a duty to properly list his or her property under the statutes. They have an obligation to submit that, and there are penalties if they don't do that. I think what we're arguing is, is that the taxpayer, in this case, doesn't have the ability to come back and call it an illegal tax based on their accounting error. I don't think that there's anything that allows, or that gives the commissioners the ability to refund without, there's no case law, there's no statute that allows that unless you kind of are making a new determination as to what's an illegal tax. But I get where he's saying that, that it's not a listing question, but it really is, because if you had a problem with your listing, you have the ability to challenge that and to remove property or amend it or whatnot, but you only have a certain period of time to do that, and once that time has run, you can't go back and change that. And I think that that's something that the Court of Appeals would be taking up in this case.
And what is that period of time, in your opinion?
Well, that's from the listing period between January through March, and that the Board of Equalization and Review can be appealed until April.
Okay, and then the GE position is that it's actually under state statute, five years, so that's the difference.
Well, right, they can't challenge the listing. What they're basically doing is saying, regardless of fault, regardless of anything, the double tax, and I hope I'm not paraphrasing, but regardless of fault, the county can't tax the same property twice. That's double taxation, and that is an illegal tax.
And that there's a state statute that specifically spells out a five-year window to address it, is that correct, from the GE representative?
Yes, there is a five, five years.
That's on the discovery of property, though, right?
That's not, that's not amending your listing, though. That's basically for challenging a tax that you have paid that you believe is illegal. You have five years to challenge that.
Good, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of try to pare it back what I think I'm hearing, sort of from a procedural level, which is, the law isn't exactly mute on these issues, but nor is the law crystal clear on what should sort of govern our action. And in the absence of that, I think what we typically do is defer to the courts to get clarity. So it sounds like if we were to deny this, the next step would be that GE could make the decision to appeal it, and we could have the courts weigh in and muddle through the compelling arguments that we're hearing and issue a finding. Is that an accurate summary?
No, I think that that's a very accurate summary.
I, not being a lawyer, I'm married to one, but that doesn't count, I'm told repeatedly. Not being a lawyer, I don't feel qualified to weigh in on an area of law that's not sort of crystal clear in the way it's articulated. So my posture at this point would be to deny the refund request. I understand the arguments that are being made on both sides, but I don't personally feel that our body is the appropriate one to determine kind of the, to determine this, and based on what we do know, that denying it, it feels to me like the step I would support at this point. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with that.
A second motion.
All right, there's a motion, second, further discussion. One other question I did have, so I'm kind of going back in the memory here, so it could be off, but I recall that we have made tax payment adjustments in some other circumstances as I think it relates to overpayment of hotel occupancy taxes. Kurt or Michael, does anybody, is that, is that correct? Or could anybody, I feel like I'm remembering doing that, but am I misremembering that?
We do, that's a completely separate avenue, completely separate statute.
Okay, but is, but is it in some ways sort of a similar dynamic, someone basically overpaid, and then the, there was a realization that it was not accurate, and we repaid them the funds to correct for the administrative error? Is that, that's how I remembered, it seems like it may be a different statute, but the actual issues involved seem very similar.
And that any request would have to be made in a timely fashion as well?
Right.
And for an occupancy tax, that process is clear and crystal clear, and here, it sounds like that's muddy.
Yeah, there, I did research trying to see whether we ever had any type of refund in the minutes, and I was unable to find any, any action where the commissioners have taken an action. Now, we've settled cases based on property valuation where the owner believes that the property is a different amount, and we've had settlement negotiations regarding that, but on a pure refund basis, where the request has gone to the commissioners, I don't believe that we've taken, I think there's one action where we've refunded, and that was back in the 90s.
I really remember doing that, I don't remember.
You're correct, we have refunded a TDA request, and most recently, I believe that we refund the penalties or delay payments, that's typically what we would refund to them. That's what has happened in the last several months or so.
Okay, all right, any other questions? So I'm going to vote against the motion. I think there's good arguments on both sides, so, but I guess I just, I do struggle with the idea that we believe, like, it's not really dispute, the payments were made twice by mistake, and just because it's a big corporation. I mean, if this were some other local business, I don't think we can treat people any differently just based on who it is. So anyway, that's my take on it, so I'm going to vote against it, but appreciate the conversation and all the information from both parties. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. All right, thank you. All right. All right, we have some board appointments. First is the HRC.
I move to re. Oh, I move to reappoint Sue Oliva.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Health and Human Services Board.
I move that we reappoint David Thompson, Stephen Veleka, and Linda Weldon.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee.
I move that we appoint Lacey Hoyle.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I do want to mention that Lacey Hoyle is our new employee that has been hired. She's actually sitting over there, if you haven't met her, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Great, welcome aboard, Lacey. All right. Any reports from boards and commissions?
I have one from our Tireless Shelter Work Group, the sub. I have one from our tireless shelter work group, the, the sub-working group under Hyatt. We, we had our final meeting yesterday, we've been meeting weekly since about February or March, and, and just to preview for folks, with the full approval of the Hyatt board, we finalized a set of recommendations that will be coming before county commission, I believe, on September fifth, and coming before city council around that time regarding short-term action steps to bring fifty-eight new emergency shelter beds online, preserve thirty shelter beds that would otherwise be lost, and additionally, expedite the process of planning a, a new facility that will provide low-barrier shelter with co-located services at the levels that are recommended by NEEH. So I do want to take a moment just to publicly thank the community members who served on that working group, meeting every single week from month on end, and the amount of research and site visits that they did was really a testament to their dedication to the issues in our community. It was a very heavy workload for them. Also, just to thank both city and county staff, who helped shepherd the process along, and we'll look forward to the discussion that happens at both elected bodies as that moves forward. So just wanted to share that.
Great, anything else? All right. We have a couple of announcements. On September fifth at three PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six in downtown Asheville, and on September fifth at five PM, the commissioners will hold their regular meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Adjourned.